Call to order, the regular session of the commissioners' meeting for the date of April, I'm sorry, May 5th. We're going to start by a call to order and a roll call, ma'am.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Howard.
Present.
Commissioner Hunt. Commissioner Mark. Vice Chairman Jones. Chairman Booker.
Here. If you would, folks, stand with me as we hear the prayer led by our county attorney, Mr. Grady, and then after we have the prayer, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance, so please remain standing.
Blessed are you, Lord God, Creator of all that was. Through you we live and move and have our being. All that we are and all that we will ever be as a nation comes from your goodness. You have given this body the task of serving this county through justice and good law. Let the light of your divine wisdom direct the deliberations of all those gathered here, and may that same light shine forth in all the proceedings and laws framed for our rule and government. May they all seek to preserve peace, promote happiness, and continue to bring us the blessings of liberty and justice. We ask this, we ask for this through your holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great help of our.
As you have in front of you the agenda for tonight, are there any additions, deletions, changes to that?
No, sir, I make a motion that we set the agendas written.
Second motion.
A motion and a second. Madam Court, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes. Okay, the agenda is approved. The next item, item number one, is a joint resolution that we're going to have read. And Mr. County Manager, are you going to read that?
Yes, sir. First of all, Ms. Chairman, this resolution is for all the counties which have a ferry dock where there's either a proposed new toll or a proposed toll increase. One second. Read this into the record, thank you. Joint resolution of the counties of Beaufort, Brunswick, Carteret, Craven, Currituck, Dare, Hyde, and Pamlico opposing new tolls and increases on existing tolls on North Carolina ferry routes. Whereas Senate Bill 257, 2025 Appropriations Act amends Article 6 of Chapter 136 of the North Carolina General Statutes to oppose tolls on all ferry routes in North Carolina and to increase tolls on currently existing ferry routes according to route destination and vehicle size. And whereas ferries are an integral part of transportation east North Carolina, providing necessary and critical services to maintain efficient transportation flow to all North Carolina residents, businesses, and visitors. And whereas a state-maintained ferry system which is free to residents and the public at large is a critical, as and directly akin to the state-maintained road system that ensures ease of travel, access, and commerce to all citizens of North Carolina, and that residents of the counties of Beaufort, Brunswick, Carteret, Craven, Currituck, Dare, Hyde, and Pamlico are as entitled to free access to state-maintained transportation corridors as those residents who live on any mainland area of the state or any area of the state served by a state-maintained bridge. And whereas the Bayview Aurora, Cherry Branch, Minnesota, Currituck, Knott's Island, and Hatteras-Ocracoke routes are currently free of charge, whereas the Cedar Island-Ocracoke, Swan Quarter-Ocracoke, Southport-Fort Fisher, and Hatteras-Ocracoke-Silver Lake routes have existing tolls, and whereas the imposition of tolls on routes that are currently free will constitute an unfair taxation burden and economic hardship on the residents and businesses of east North Carolina, and whereas toll increases on routes with existing tolls constitute an unfair taxation burden and economic hardship on the residents, businesses, and visitors of east North Carolina. Now therefore be it resolved by the boards of commissioners of the counties of Beaufort, Brunswick, Carteret, Craven, Currituck, Dare, Hyde, and Pamlico, North Carolina, that counties served by ferry routes operated by the NC Ferry Division strongly oppose the imposition of tolls on free routes and increases on currently existing tolls on all other routes, and urge the North Carolina General Assembly to delete the provision requiring such charges and not enact this or any similar requirement in any other legislation if adopted on this day, 5th day of May, 2025.
Good, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second, and a second. Madam Court, would you call the roll?
Question.
Go ahead.
Just a comment, I did talk to Representative Tyson, Representative Karen, and Senator Vincent on this, and I know they're all three working hard to make sure that this doesn't happen. If there's ever tolls on these ferries, I don't think people that are paying taxes for the current road system should be paying them, so I'm definitely in support of this. Thank you.
Yeah, I spoke to them this morning as well, and they are, they're in agreement that they don't agree with it, so hopefully that's, that'll be the end of it. However, we want to go ahead and approve this resolution, so any other comments before we do? Madam Court, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes. Read it before, do we have anybody?
Not bridge any topics.
I'll wait and do it. So the next item on the agenda is petition of citizens. There's no citizen signed up to speak on the agenda topics, so we will have later in the, in the, in the meeting, we will have general topics. So we'll go next to the consent agenda, item number three. Consent agenda is the minutes of the April 21 regular session, tax releases and refunds, a request to set a public hearing for Project Tint, a request to set a public hearing for Pamlico Sound Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan update, and a proclamation recognizing May 4th to 10th as clerks to the Boards of County Commissioners Week. Madam Court, you have your own week. How about that? Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any comments? Would you call the, the roll, please?
Yes. Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Chairman Booker.
Yes. Okay, the next item on the agenda would be item number four, Craven Community College Budget Presentation. Dr. Raymond Stats, Dr. Stats, welcome.
Good evening. Well, good evening, I have with me Jim Malart, Chief Finance Officer, Vice President of the College, and he'll be getting part of our presentation. We're also welcoming, give number two, Phil Dicker, whom, Sergeant Vice President Denise Moore, who is serving as Mr. Malart's right-hand person. And we have our Chair of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Erwin Patrick, who's leading a second one as Chair of our County. I always like to start at this point by saying thank you. Support that the County Commission providing Craven Community College does not go unappreciated daily basis. I had the opportunity of working with 50 on this 57th, under 30 college presidents, and very few can report the amount of support that we did for you. We are very grateful for that every year when we come. Well, today we will talk about the current fiscal year, Jim will talk about the local infrastructure projects that are in progress or ready to be complete. He'll move on to our five-year plan, which will cover fiscal '26 through '30, and then highlight what's going to happen here in the next year. Then he'll, he'll conclude by talking about our big construction project, which is underway right now, the Corporate Training Center. And then I'll pick back up to talk about our 10-year enrollment data plan. I'm telling you, enrollment data, data. And then I'll spend some time walking through the completion of our Public Safety Training Center Strategic Master Facilities Plan, and, and where we're going with that. And finally wrap up with our fiscal '26 County Budget Request.
Good evening, I should go to work this. Good evening, Commissioners, good evening, everyone. We're going to talk a little bit about some of the things we're doing at the college, most notably what we're doing with our infrastructure projects. Our preventive maintenance plan continues to work really, really well. We started this probably 10 years ago, I believe. Staying on top of the things that are going wrong before they become a problem has served us very well. Sometimes things don't always pay attention to our plan, the chillers don't go out when they're supposed to, and, and rosting repaired before they're supposed to, and rosting repaired. But it's allowed us the ability to kind of interchange things and move them around as we see fit to make sure that we are keeping the campus, you know, at the optimum level all the time. So it really is working and it helps us. This last thing, for example, that you see the Bait Hall chiller upgrade, those chillers, some of them are taking 12 months leave time. So it's a little bit sometimes challenging to figure out, like, when am I going to need that when it's going to take a year to get that in? But like I said, the, the plan we have for like a preemptive strike is very well, you know, executed. The team I have over there does a great job, and so we continue to do that. We've also done major refurbishments in the Bosch Building, the Bolt Center, some of you may have had a chance to go down there, we had ribbon cutting early this year for the Heavy Equipment Simulator Building. That first building, that was the building that was down there that had all of the old Christmas decorations and all that stuff was in there. We took a look at, this'll work, they got down there, it turned out amazing. It really turned out amazing. And same with the small business generator, that was like a four-stall, didn't even have a complete wall down to the ground on one side. That is now four incubator spaces for new businesses. We have one in there now and more on the way. And then we've got the garage and classroom office refurbishments, that's the diesel garage, and we also refurbished the office down there. One of the things that's helped us quite a bit here is the team that we have doing our maintenance and facilities work has actually, in some cases, completely done the rehab, and in other cases, for example, in the Equipment Simulator and Small Business Generator, they have actually helped out with, so they, we would pay for contractors to do certain things, and then where possible, we get our folks to do it, because it's obvious a little , little rate that way, and we can get those done when we, when we need to get them done. And of course, at the Havelock Campus, painting and grounds updates, so we basically went through it, did some new painting, put some new flooring in different places. This is just some of the things. This machine shop on the left, I'd been there, gosh, I think that's been there since the AMC Building opened up. We now have new flooring in there, completely resealed. This is at the, also in the Bosch Building, there's a big office space here, completely did all the carpet in there, that also been in there since the building had opened up. This is what I was talking about downtown, so this was the, the Heavy Equipment Building, literally stuff was coming down off the ceiling, you could see some of the Christmas and things like that, pieces that were in there, decorations. It turned out amazing. They were able to keep a lot of the original wood, it really, really turned out very well. And it's now full of, we got three simulators in there, sir, I think that's right, five? Five, thank you, five. This was the other one, so like I said, this was like a four-stall open area, they had the garage doors on it, but the one side wasn't full. It now looks, if you see the picture on the upper left there, or, excuse me, right, it's now four offices. Our team was actually able to go in there, each one's got its own AC unit, its own water, so they basically are self-contained units. That turned out very well also. This is the garage floor in the diesel building, diesel equipment building, this has turned out very well, that sealer's work, we're putting it on our automotive floors, our machining floors, anywhere we were doing industrial-type work, we have found this sealer to really help in keeping those floors able to be one clean, and it just lasts a lot longer, so really working out for us. LED, this is a big one, so it was, I don't know, it hasn't been that long ago, but we started noticing that every time we wanted to do something, you know, the utility bill is, is hard to keep up with sometimes, and we use a lot of utilities. So one of the things we started changing is we started putting in LEDs everywhere we can. And they're a little bit more expensive upfront sometimes, but the payoff is, is huge. We are, like I said, working through, by 2029, we hope to have it pretty much all switched over to LED lighting. Some of it we have to temper down because some people don't like the LED lighting, so we do what we can in those areas so we can deflect it a little bit, but we usually take care of that. Picture on the right there is a little bit of our five-year plan, and so what we do there is you'll see, we have everything scheduled, and as long as all the buildings and all the grounds and all the facilities do exactly what we're saying, where everything's perfect, but not, that doesn't always happen, so we do the best we can, and we'll just move things around. If, if you see like Bosch down there needed something earlier, we would move it up, slide something down, but having that flexibility is working, and so we will continue to do that. Parking lots, staying on top of those, sidewalk, we just actually had sidewalk repairs. The number one thing I hear about happening at the campus as far as like just the, you know, injury-type things is tripping. I, I've heard it, I've read it, but I've never experienced it. I think people trip a lot, and so we just went through and had every one of our sidewalks checked, inspected, and ground. Well, anywhere where there was like a trip hazard on all the sidewalks, we had every one of those things ground down. So definitely makes a big difference. AC replacements, if you lose an AC with a year to wait, that's a long time to go in North Carolina in the summer without air conditioning in the classroom. So like I said, we do our best to stay on top of that. And I've got the greatest, John Melville is one of the greatest facilities managers you could ever ask for, so he does an amazing job for us over there. Excuse me, so again, this is what we do, this is most of the things you see in our five-year plan. We talk about, we're going to be doing the upstairs block, if you come over to campus, you see the big black and silver sign up there, those stairs have been there now for probably going about 12 years, I think, so we're going to do some work on those, bender refurbishments, we, we kind of go around and try to do at least two or three restrooms a year, because the restrooms get an awful lot of attention and we need to keep them up. And, you know, the faucets, from the faucets to the stalls, to the paint, to the floor, we try to make sure that they stay up. I talked about doing the lighting, we'll continue to do that. Library refurbishments, for those of you that are in the Havelock area, we're going in, we try to do that at least once a year, do something down there, try to keep that as up to date as possible. And then we have a, a machining area down there that we're going to be putting in some new roll-up doors down there, because they're getting a little bit tough to work with. And this is the Corporate Training Center, if you've been on the campus lately, some of you were over there when we did the groundbreaking, this is coming along, I mean, they, they came in and they just went to town. And so it's, they're going along pretty fast, and we expect them to be completed around March 26th, and it's going to be a fantastic facility, can't wait to get that built. And I think, sir, that might be it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
A little lot when you're around construction. This is the first building on the main campus since I've been there, I didn't get a chance to watch the STEM Building get built on a day-to-day basis. You learn things like how important it is that the sewer system runs downhill. If you don't have that right and have a little, little hill anywhere in there, creates a lot of trouble. So they're out there with, it's pretty amazing to watch, and, and you learn things like drainage, they're working on the drainage on the building, but of course, that's all torn up right now as they do it. And so this morning, John Melville was pumping out, what do you call those things, they sit in the ground?
Oh, we had basically culverts that where our water drainage goes off to before it can go to the pond, so right now with all the construction, that's kind of blocked off, so we're now pumping to make sure we don't have a problem.
So he was pumping water this morning to keep our drainage lines clear until they can reestablish the flow through the campus.
Not the sewer line.
Not the sewer line, no. He was, we keep those separate. So let me talk a little bit about the Bolt Center, we have now opened seven buildings, I hadn't really kept good count until we opened two buildings this year and realized just how many buildings have opened in a span of, of six years. So we now have the original Bolt Center, which is now called Taylor Hall, we have the Small Business Center and Makerspace, we have the Diesel Garage, we have the Kitchen, we have now the Heavy Equipment Operations Building, and the Small Business Center Generator. And our team is already looking at two more buildings, where we're going to convert another set of market stalls here in the coming year or two, soon as we get a little money, and that, not from you, but, and also we're looking for a grant to finish out one more outbuilding that's there to expand our construction, so that'll give us nine buildings, so hopefully here in the next couple of years. Forty, it's actually almost 4,700 now, it changes almost by the week, it passed through those doors since we opened up six years ago, so it's a great story. I do like to tell folks that in terms of traditional construction money that we would get, say, from the state, we used the $9 a square foot. All of the rest came from federal, state, nonprofit grants. Of course, the County Commission has provided all of the operations and maintenance to run it. The City of New Bern has been a phenomenal partner, and technically a landlord as well. It is a great story to talk about that facility. We had NC Secretary of State Elaine Marshall was there to take a look at it Friday and speak with the small business owners. It was interesting for her to say that she'd been to community colleges, and said, you know, it's a real idea, community colleges really shouldn't hide their Small Business Center on the third doorway on the right, somewhere in the middle of the campus. And I had to kind of hold down Dr. Jeff Wilk, he keeps like, oh, no, 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 it's right here. The Bolt Center has kind of really looked at that great. We have a Marine Corps veteran is our first generator customer, so he is running a little company called Gremlin 3D, they do 3D printing of a variety of things, and they're literally 15 feet away from the door of the Small Business Center. So that synergy is really, really taking hold. Been an interesting year in terms of enrollment, really didn't see it coming, it started last summer. We had our best summer in 10 years of last year, and then fall and spring followed suit. We have really a peak level, this is the biggest year we've had in 10. Now, those numbers don't look impressive perhaps to the untrained eye, 3,200 and change to 3,400 change, doesn't sound like a big deal. But back in 2015, we were largely a junior college, mostly doing transfer education, so the classroom space, you have a math class at 9:00 in the morning, at 10:00 you reuse the same class with, with, space with 20 more students to take a psychology course, reuse it at 11:00 for English, and so on and so forth. We've transitioned very much into what I like to refer to as a comprehensive community college. And that comprehensive includes everything from our Transitions Academy and our basic skills, all the way through health sciences, career programs, and transfer. Well, welding classes take a lot of space. I can, I can take a classroom worth of space that I used to put 20 English students in, that'll fit about 12, or, I'm sorry, about six welders, and that's the only thing I'm going to use that space for. So it's a challenge, even though we haven't grown in terms of FTE, we have significantly grown in the footprint that we require to teach our students. So we'll take a few minutes to talk about the Public Safety Training Center. By way of background, recall that we've leased from you 30-plus acres through 2064. I may or may not be retired by then, I'm not sure, Jim, ought to be 98?
Yeah.
Jim will be retired, he's promised me that much. But you may recall during the last two-year session, we were allocated $12 million from the state legislature, and that will be sufficient, we believe, to get us to initial operations capability late next year. Where we're at right now is all of the design schematics are sitting at the State Construction Office, we expect them back within, I think we're about two weeks out, five days, even closer. From there, we'll go to bid, we'll then go through another round with the State Construction Office, and then we hope to be turning dirt sometime this fall with initial operations taking place in December of '26. Let's see if I got this right, there we go. So if you're, this is the, the main road going through Executive Parkway, Bosch is up here. And so as you come down this road, this is the end of the road. This is the old sewage, stormwater drainage area that the city owns. We'll put in a new entrance right here, this'll go all the way through to the back. Oh, good, he's going to point at the other one, that's good, that's good. So this will be a mobile unit, that'll be our initial classroom in the out years, we hope to replace that with a permanent classroom. Over here is our indoor shooting range, that will be the first full-scale complete building, and I'm going to show you some pictures of, of these buildings as we go through. We'll have a burn pad here and a burn tower here, and then this is a 400-by-600 slab of concrete that will be our driving pad. For, for as long as I know, we have been doing our BLAT driver course at the West Craven High School parking lot. That's pretty hard on asphalt, not to mention the good graces of the school system that give us use for that year after year after year, but we will finally have the capability here locally. And that, and then they can have their parking lots back without us tearing them up, that'll probably be nice for change. We have a couple of alternate bids, should, should the bids come out the way they need to, we'll put, and it gets a little smaller, we got a debrief building, this is basically a shelter to get out of the heat, we want to put a classroom in down here, eventually here will be an outdoor shooting range, some storage buildings, natural gas training, some propane tanks, eventually this will be a real building, and we'll get this parking lot completely laid out. So the indoor shooting range is a 10, 10-lane range in a steel-constructed building, about $2.6 billion. It'll also feature a steel bullet trap, a control room, a range vestibule, noise attenuation, target storage, restrooms, we even are going to get a classroom in there, which we, we didn't think we'd fit, all for $2.665 million. It's essentially a kind of a modified version of cargo containers, although these aren't actually cargo containers on this particular unit, but it's that type of technology. So what we will be doing is staying within the motif of the industrial park, which, which so won't stick out so much, but it also is much less expensive to build. The burn tower is a four-story tower combined with a two-story residential section, it'll have three interior floors, a flat roof with a hatch and guardrails, repelling anchors, external IBC stairs, interior OSHA stairs, and an elevator shaft. The residential side contains shingle and metal roofing, an attic space, a maze room, if you've ever been in a, in a fire building's maze room, that is frightening, they fill it full of smoke, put the mask on, and you got to find your way out. But it's, it's outstanding training, and then two rooms that'll be lit on fire from the inside, all reusable. Again, about $1.1 million. The driving range, I, I'm amazed, the first estimate we got for the driving range was $3 to $4 million. We have a wonderful architect that's worked out how to do this and accommodate both commercial truck driving, basic law enforcement, fire and EMS, and they've got the price down to $1.6 million. Well, the burn pad, we'll be lighting all sorts of stuff on fire there, that's about $200,000 worth of concrete. The modular classroom, this is your standard mobile home, although it's, it's going to be outfitted so it doesn't look like it's quite as mobile as it will be, and we hope to get about 10 years out of that before, hopefully we'll have some funds to, by that time, to put up a larger, more permanent structure. This is how the price is out, including general contracting, contingencies, fees, and escalation, $12.3 million. Interesting way this was funded, OSBM gave us the money upfront, so two years ago, they deposited $12 million to us, it's already earned $300,000, and our Board of Trustees just approved a new construction addendum because we're expecting another $450,000 in interest, so we'll actually have $12.75. That seems really good, what I'm expecting is that'll cover the cost escalation, but we might have a chance to get at least, whoops, I got into myself, didn't I? There we go. Yeah, now I can flip through, got, got too carried away with the buttons. There we go. With a little luck, we'll get at least one of the rehab shelters in there as an alternative bid. Any questions for me about the Public Safety Training Center? This is our County Budget Request for fiscal '26, beginning with our baseline, which was last year's allocation of $4.85 million. Increases in salaries, retirement benefits, and health benefits, plus an operating request for utilities, insurance, and ONM, as you've probably noticed, insurance has really been a problem. I know my own homeowner's insurance went up 20% this past year, and we're seeing similar increases even at our level. 25%, we expect to have the Corporate Training Center open early in the fourth quarter of next year, so that is 25% of the amount we briefed when we first proposed the CTC deal. No request for the Public Safety Training Center. Note that we did receive partial funding last year, we are holding that in the bank, and that'll be reduced, we will use that to reduce our request for next year when it gets opened. Since fiscal '15, we've had the same baseline allocation for capital at $500,000, we've grown about 50,000 square foot. We've grown about 50,000 square foot since then, as well as about ten buildings, eight buildings since then. And so we were requesting a ten percent increase in capital allocation as we begin to maintain these newer buildings for a total of $550,000 in capital allocation. That brings our total request to $5.631,783 million. And again, as always, thank you for supporting us, especially in our sixtieth anniversary year. We've had a lot of fun with it this year. And the announcement we have today, in fact, to celebrate our sixtieth anniversary, is Craven Community College has one club sports team, baseball, and they are headed to the Division III World Series, first time in the college's history. It's going to happen on commencement weekend, so I won't be able to be there, but we're really looking forward to that. They were the bottom seed in the regional tournament and knocked off three upsets last weekend to head for the World Series. So we're, we're real excited about that. Questions for Dr. Stapps? Comments?
I don't have any questions. I just thank you for your presentation, and I got to hear Dr. Boucher at a recent conference, and people from across the state of North Carolina were a little bit jealous of what the, our community college does for the base and the military, active duty, and retirees both. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
I will say, I have two comments. Number one, we were very fortunate, you and us, that the Volt Center facility was sitting unused with buildings and that needed a lot of work, but nevertheless, a beautiful, a beautiful piece of property that was, I don't know, for many years idle. And so that was the good news. And then what you've done with it and what's been done since then, nothing short of fantastic. My second comment would be, I was with a parent and their son last weekend. He graduated from, I guess at Havelock, was there a graduation? Havelock. And he is three years out of high school. He has his engineering degree from North Carolina State. He has been working at the base part-time during the last three years while he is going to school. And he starts his full-time career at the base, I think he's a mechanical engineer, starts his full-time career at the base momentarily. And his dad said to me, he's actually put money in the bank during his college career, and he has zero debt.
Yeah.
Contrast that with what I heard someone say on TV the other day, that somebody that graduated from some major university with $250,000 in debt, and their degree would probably get them a $40,000 a year job. They'll never pay it off. And so a really great program that I hope more and more people can take advantage of.
We, we opened up, I say we, NC State just started their second major in electrical engineering this past fall. Fifteen, I think, is one of the largest classes we're having. The goal is to get that to forty. And then floor space will limit us from there. But there is a need for over a hundred engineers, mechanical and electoral, every year here in the county, particularly as the F-35 ramps up.
And not just on base, there are other companies in our county that need to hire engineers. So they don't have to go to work at the base, but they have that degree in their hands. So really a great program.
And on a sad note, its founder with NC State, Dr. Fortney, Dr. Bill Fortney retires next month. So we start the search for his, his successor. He's, he's left quite a legacy with us.
Good guy.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Dr. Stapps likes to hide his light under a bushel basket, and since I'm a trustee with Craven Community College, I'm going to brag some. Dr. Stapps was one of the subject matter experts at the North Carolina Defense Summit last week, and Dr. Boucher was a second subject matter expert highlighted on one of the panels, some topics for workforce development, for maritime defense industry and aerospace industry, and also spousal completion of higher education. It's, so Eastern North Carolina was front and center at the Defense Summit. So thank you.
And for the audience's benefit, we will be working in the next few weeks on our budget, and your request will be, then we will certainly take in under advisement.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Item number five is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Budget Presentation with Jennifer Dacey as the chair. Jennifer, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. Hope you all are well. Our budget is before you. I will just note also that I've got one of my other council members, Mr. Lester, who I know is one of your regulars here, who's also with us tonight, and he's welcome to chime in as well. But you've got the summary before you. We, we, we met, our Funding and Review Committee met and has recommended some changes to what we, we funded last year. So we will continue funding the Area Day Reporting Center, a number of programs through the Mediation Center of Eastern Carolina to include teen court, restitution, anti-family connections program, and then also, of course, the program that we fund, the Volt Workforce Development Center, which is vocational skills for youth, timely, since we've just discussed the Volt Center. The one program that the committee and the council recommended removing and zeroing out, it was a mentoring program, and then instead we have, largely because of the insistence of some of our court counselors who felt like that program was not being really adequately utilized, chose instead to fund a program that is sponsored by the Methodist Home for Children, which is a very substantial partner with the Division of Juvenile Justice, and that will provide some home-based family counseling for all of our juveniles. And so we, we took from various programs, cut everybody a little bit, cut our administrative funds to the bone, and are instead funding, funding that transition reentry program instead of the Girls Empowered Man Up program going forward. So that's our recommendation. Again, these are state dollars, and you all just essentially get to approve it. No additional county dollars are involved here.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Dacey? You have no questions? Do I have a motion?
No, ma'am.
A motion and a second to approve the budget for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Oh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. Thank you again, Ms. Dacey, for bringing that to us. Under Departmental Matters, item number six, Social Services, a Home and Community Care Block Grant, recommended budget for fiscal year 2526, Mr. Clayton Gaskins. Mr. Gaskins?
Good evening, Commissioners. Before we get started, I want to make sure you all are looking at the same page. Up in the top right corner, it's DAAS 731. So the first column, A, if you look over to the last, or in column A where it says "total," just go straight down to the bottom, 551258. You all see that? That's the amount, the national grant award that the Craven County got last year. This is block grant in London. So DSS is the lead agency for this board, met with the providers that you see over, listed over on the left, and basically, we're going by the same budget that we had last year. One column over, column B, that's the county match. So all the way down, you'll see $61,251. And then the next column, C, that's the total of the whole program. So that NGA typically doesn't come in until late May or sometime in June. So historically, we have to use last, the previous year's budget, and then do a budget amendment later in the summer as we need to. Last year, I think when we got the NGA, it was toward the end of June, there, I think there was maybe $3,000 less than the previous year. So when we have our board meeting in July, we'll discuss then and what we did last year. Each program took, we just divided that out between the programs and took it, took that equally, and then, then come back to a budget amendment with the correct amount.
For the benefit of those at home, can you elaborate a little bit on where that money goes?
So the, okay, so this isn't up for folks to see. So there's programs listed over on the side. Some of you all may have heard these, the Senior Companion Program, which is provided from Coastal Community Action in Newport. That's a program that provides companionship for seniors here in our county. Havelock Congregate Meals, which is the, they provide meals at the Havelock Senior Center. Transportation is carts that provides transportation for our folks here in the county. And then the Congregate Meals, this is for Craven County, our senior center just up the street here that's getting renovated presently. And then we also have Home Delivered Meals, which is also known as Meals on Wheels. And then Social Services provides case management. So some of the case management services they provide, with the hope that it's preventative work of leading, of cases leading into adult protective services, they get a slice of this program funding as well. So.
And IHA?
It's In-Home Made. I'm sorry.
In-Home Made.
Yep, 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 sorry. That's also with D. Actually, those five at the bottom, DSS kind of provides all of those. We moved transportation over to, to them two, three years ago as a subcontractor.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Gaskins?
Just a quick one. The Meals on Wheels program, I've heard, and there's a lot of misinformation out about that being cut federally for reimbursement. Is that, are you hearing anything?
I have heard some things myself, but I don't know anything to confirm. I would, I would hate to comment because I don't know. Yeah, but I.
This is the funding stream for Meals on Wheels for Craven County. So I haven't heard about this funding, been talking about, Clay. Again, I don't know everything, but we're proceeding on like we would. But I haven't heard that involved with this particular block grant that's coming down.
Yeah. Any other comments, questions? Do I have a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Gaskins. We appreciate it. Next item, number seven, under Departmental Matters, is Finance Department, a budget amendment for fines and forfeitures.
Good evening.
Mike Warren.
Good evening, Board. I have one item for you tonight on, on the agenda, that is fines and forfeitures that we collect and from the clerk of court, and we remit to the school system. We started out the fiscal year budgeted at $525,000. Right now, we've collected $601,000, so we're obviously have exceeded our original projections or, and are currently trending at a level that will probably reach around $800,000 this year. I'm being told that, that with the new software implementation at the courts, over across the street, that they're able to, been able to catch up on some of the backlog of processing some of these cases, which has in turn generated these additional revenues.
So it's not necessarily doubled in amount of fines?
No, sir. It is the volume of cases that they are able to process through the system.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Warren?
I have, I have a question. Well, for the public, I think, and for me. Is this, these funds part of our budget, or are these additional funds that will be given to the schools?
These are basically, they, they're pass-through funds. We collect them. There's a, other revenue sources like court fees and things that go to the Sheriff's Department, fines of forfeitures, but those particular amounts will be remitted to the schools. So we make an estimated projection at the beginning of the year, and, and then we adjust as the numbers become actuals.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the budget. Second.
Okay. Motion, second? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. Thank you, Mike Warren. Item number eight is appointments. Under Appointments, if you'll notice, Board, under Pending, we have the Craven County Clean Sweep Committee, Highway 70 Corridor Committee, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Attorney, and Volunteer Agricultural District, Districts One and Six. So those will be coming up. Under Current, tonight, we're going to look at the three items. The first one is Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Mr. Shane Diggan seeks appointment to fill the expiring term of Ira Whitford.
I nominate Shane.
Okay. And are there any other nominations? Hearing none, Mr. Diggan will be appointed by acclamation. Local Emergency Planning Committee, Tyler Rhodes seeks to fill the vacancy of Judy Antry as recommended due to her retirement from International Paper. And the application is attached. Do I hear a motion to appoint Tyler Rhodes?
I would nominate Tyler Rhodes to the LUPC.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, Mr. Rhodes will be assigned as replacing, replacement for Ms. Antry. And the third one is Emergency Management Services Advisory Council. Michael Bright seeks reappointment. That's the Township Seven EMS. That's my district, so I will nominate him. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, Mr. Bright will be reappointed by acclamation. Under Upcoming, Fire Tax Commissioner Board for Cove City, John Hawkins, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, even Lozuski, Sheriff Office, and Tourism Development Authority.
We're going, let's back up a minute, please.
Okay.
At a Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, I would recommend Sean Diggins also to that board.
We're going to do that next, next meeting.
And we already did.
That's upcoming.
Shane.
We just.
We just did Shane.
Yes.
What was the question?
She, she said she'd like, like to recommend Shane, but I think we.
I think he's already been approved.
Should have done that.
Earlier by. Recommendation of ET.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Correct.
There's another seat for an attorney.
Next meeting. That's our next meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we already, we already got Shane on that council. This is another seat, and the, Mr. Lozuski is the name that's been recommended.
Chesky.
And we'll deal with that one next meeting.
Okay.
Okay? And last, under Tourism Development, Presh, Prankavala, or the hotel motel rep. So those are the ones we've got to take a look at next, coming up. Any other comments or questions on appointments? Okay?
You've all been waiting for.
Yes. Mr. Brady, our county attorneys report.
Appreciate the introduction. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. I have two items for your consideration. Tonight, both involve county-owned surplus real estate acquired through the tax foreclosure process. Both properties are owned jointly with the city of New Bern, which has already given its final approval. The first property is located at a, at 1125A Queen Street with a parcel ID number of We received an initial offer of $1,350 when it went through the upset bid process. We did receive an increased bid of $1,736.25. So we recommend that we give the final approval to that bid. The original taxes and cost of foreclosure together were $5,173.03, and the tax value of the property is $2,700. Again, I would suggest the board give its final approval to this bid.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. Item B.
The other property is located at a, at 1120 Kirk Street with a parcel ID number of 8011299. This is also in the city of New Bern. Our initial bid was $3,375. As with the other property, this was upset with the final bid being $4,071.50. The original pass-through taxes and cost of foreclosure were $4,626.29, and the tax value of this property is $6,750, as with the other. As with the other, I suggest that the Board give this final approval.
Okay, we're being asked to adopt the resolution approving conveyance after expiration of upset bid for parcel 8-011-299.
I move. Second.
Got a motion and a second? Please call the roll. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. It was nice and easy. Okay. Petition of citizens, this is for general topics. We will hear comments directly pertaining to policies or issues which are under the authority of the Board. Comments directly pertaining to these items should be, the Board should be addressed as a whole, not an individual commissioner or staff member. Please begin by giving your name and address and the topic you are going to address. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. Please be courteous in language and presentation. Speakers should not make the same or repetitive comments as prior speakers, and do not attack or insult any person or group of people. Do we have speakers tonight?
Yes, sir, we do. The first one, we have two who signed up to speak. The first is Mr. Joseph Twilley.
Okay. First, state your name and address.
Joseph Twilley, 3150 Drew Avenue. Good evening, Commissioners. I am here tonight to speak on behalf of our exceptional children, and frankly, on behalf of every child and staff member who walks through our schools each day. We face an undeniable and urgent reality. Our E C population has grown beyond what the state and federal funding will cover. We are funded only for up to 13% of our student body, but we are currently at 17%. That means 318 of our students, 318 children with disabilities, are left without the funding they desperately need and legally deserve. To fully support them, we need $1,783,000. We are respectfully requesting $2 million because beyond E C needs, we are also confronting an unimaginable budget cuts that threaten the very core of our school operations, including critical services like school nursing. Let me be clear, cuts to our school nurses is not an option. Our schools are responsible for students with epilepsy, diabetes, severe allergies, asthma, real life-threatening conditions that cannot wait for help to arrive from another school. A child having a seizure needs care immediately. A diabetic child crashing needs intervention immediately. Without a nurse on site, every second becomes a difference between life and death. Legally, only registered nurses can assess and sign emergency medical plans. And we have hundreds of children whose lives depend on them. Nurses also provide essential support during 504 meetings, ensuring health needs are fully and properly addressed. Their absence will not only jeopardize student safety, but also open our district to serious legal risks, risks that would cost us far more than any short-term budget savings. Moreover, our teachers and staff also rely on nurses for emergency care, for allergic reaction injuries and sudden illnesses. Nurses just don't save lives. They save lives, period. We are not asking lightly. We're asking because it is necessary. We are asking because our children deserve it, and we are asking because the health, safety, and dignity of our community demands it. Commissioners, some areas of our budget can suffer cuts. This cannot be one of them. Please fund the full $2 million we are requesting to protect our 318 E C students, to preserve the nursing staff that is critical to life-saving care, and to honor the commitment we have made to every child and every family we serve. But tonight is about more than emergency risks. It's about, it's about who we want to be. We want Craven County schools to be the place families are proud to send their children. We want Craven County schools to be the place where the best teachers, nurses, and staff choose to build their careers. We want to be the district that doesn't just get by, but leads. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and for hearing the seriousness of this need.
Thank you. Second speaker?
Yes, it's Ms. Danielle Kowalski.
My name is Danielle Kowalski. I live at 117 Wildflower Way, Pollocksville, which is in Craven County. I address you tonight concerning the budgeting of Craven County schools for the 2025-2026 school year. As a product of Craven County schools, I would be remiss if I did not advocate for what the system needs to continue to be successful and competitive in the modern era. My own children are educated in this school system, and their immediate and extended families haven't been educated in our area's formal schools for at least 100 years. This education has produced not only tradesmen and skilled workers who have contributed to the direct physical and economic success of this area, but has also produced those who have contributed to the area's social stability via government service. Others have gone on to become professionals, including a doctor at Cedar Sinai. If Craven County Schools has done this within our own family, I am sure the success stories abound when evaluating the population at large. Craven County Schools is not only the main educational system for our county's youth, but also a major employer of our county's adult residents. An investment in our schools is a reinvestment in our area's future. Many military spouses work in our school system. Their tenure contributes to both current and possible future economic success for our community. A strong school system contributes to the likelihood that service members return to our community at the end of their service, be it immediately or decades after. The benefits of a strong school system do not just apply to locals or our service members. As a strong retirement and tourism community, these members expect a workforce who can support their needs. Many of our local tourism geared businesses are staffed by high schoolers. Many of our local medical offices are staffed by local graduates. Many first responders were educated in Craven County schools. Young people, after venturing out to explore the world or attend college, return to Craven County to raise their families. This has happened throughout generations. Your investment in today's educational system returns dividends tomorrow. While I do not claim to know the intricacies and all of the demands placed on our county's budgeting process, I do know that a consistent departure from properly funding our schools will yield declines in all areas of our community. An uneducated community affects economics, healthcare, and safety. Please allow our community to be a beacon of these things. A school system which does not prioritize the full scope of the student, including the arts, athletics, and mental health, will cause families to leave our system. Many would choose to leave the area before choosing other local alternatives. Please let our children know that they are deserving and respected members of Craven County who have a place in its future. Please let our community know that you value its continued success and well-being by adequately funding our schools. Please also know, as I'm sure you do, that you have the platform to communicate with our state and federal lawmakers, and we are depending on you.
Thank you. Okay. County Manager, Dr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Robbie, you might want that timer since this is Cinco de Mayo, and I'm sure I'm between everybody and leaving here, so. But I did have a few things for the Board tonight. First, as mentioned earlier by Commissioner Mitchell, I was able to attend a part of the Defense Summit last week in Raleigh. What a great event, and I can tell you, Craven County was well-represented in a lot of ways, not just through higher education, but through our municipalities and all the work we're doing to protect Cherry Point, grow Cherry Point. Commissioner Mitchell did an excellent job leading the charge there. Craven County front and center. And I know Commissioner Hunt was there, and she may, I don't want to steal any thunder, so I'll let, I'll let their comments follow. Second, informational, on May 15th at 1 o'clock, we will be hosting a Highway 70 I-42 Corridor Commission meeting at the New Bern, boy, Craven County Convention Center. We will host all five counties here. This will be our one time during the year to host that event. So if anyone's interested, please attend. Also, want to say a few words on your agenda tonight was a resolution honoring county clerks. And I know what effort Abigail puts into her job, and I just want to publicly thank her, not only for putting up with me and Jean, but also doing a heck of a job as a clerk, keeping us all where we need to be. And also just want to give a shout out to Nan, who shared this year with Abigail. Two fine clerks, both did a great job.
And put up with all of us.
And put up with all of us, that's right. Also, as you know, we're nearing the time here where you're starting to hear budget presentations. At your next meeting on May the 19th, I will be presenting my recommended budget to the Board. We will then go through the study sessions and work sessions as we have in the past. Look forward to doing that. In preparation for that, I did have an opportunity to meet with the interim superintendent last week, Rick Stout. Great meeting with him. I would remind the Board at the end of your agenda, there is a recess to reconvene on Friday, May 9th at 8:30 to then receive the budget presentation from the Board of Education. So just make sure that's in the motion when we leave. And that's it, sir. That's all I got. Unless you have questions or thoughts for me.
Any questions for the County Manager? No questions?
Thank you.
All set. Okay, last is Commissioners' comments. Who would like to go first?
I don't think you can do this wonderful military thing. They might want to share that.
Okay, I'll go, I'll go next. First one I will start out with is the visit of Secretary of State Ms. Elaine Marshall on the second at to the Vault Center. This is part of a statewide initiative called World Wise, Resources for Innovators, Startups, and Entrepreneurs. She is going around the state, talking to small business owners, finding out what we're doing well, what we're doing okay, what programs we need to institute so that the resources to startup businesses are more accessible to the people who need them. It was excellent program. She met with a number of local businesses to get real-time feedback in terms of actually what you need. I will pass along, I had a five-minute conversation with Secretary Marshall four and a half years ago in car. She remembered it and asked me about it. So if you say anything to Secretary Marshall, you better keep your Ps and Qs because she will remember it and ask you. Sharp lady. Anyway, it was nice to have her here at Craven County. It's nice to have the Vault Center highlighted, especially since we've done it and got a great community college. Second one I'd like to talk about is the North Carolina Defense Summit. This is our third one. We do this in partnership with the National Organization Association of Defense Communities. This year, there were two themes. One was spousal and family resilience. And the other one was the impact of the change of administration and the impact of the National Defense Authorization Act. It was a pleasure to moderate a panel with three subject matter experts. One of them was our County Manager, Jack White. The other, one of the others was the defense lobbyist for the state of North Carolina. With it, the second one was by Allies for Cherry Point in terms of effective advocacy on Capitol Hill. Allies for Cherry Point does better than anybody else in the state of North Carolina. And we put them up there to say, this is how you do it. This is what works. I still have E N C located. And then finally, as we said before, Gary Boucher, and with Craven Community College and an E C U. So it, appreciate Commissioner Hunt attending. Nice to see her up there. It's, next one is, is going to be worth seeing. We have now made this part of the North Carolina Military Affairs Annual or Biannual Program. So more to follow.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Okay. There's been much said tonight about public schools. And that is significant. It's very important. Tonight, I'm going to speak to an event that's happening. It's a public schools, and the event is the Partners in Education Luncheon. The Pie Luncheon. It will be given on May 28th, Wednesday, May 28th at noon. And it's $35, and this is for, for any of the public. And these funds go directly to support teachers and students with grants and scholarships and funds. This doesn't go through administration. This goes directly to students and to teachers. So if you're out there and you are inclined to do so, take a $35 and buy a ticket and go to the Pie Luncheon and support our students and staff. That's it.
That's done. You're last.
Yeah, okay, thanks. I have a couple of things. First of all, I apologize for stepping in late. I was actually on the other side of that wall working. I guess I just love my job so much that I didn't realize the time was rapidly passing by, and my, my apologies. Second thing I'd like to say is thank you, Abigail, and thank you, Nan, for the great work you do. It's really appreciated. Commissioner Mitchell, Jack touched on this. You did an outstanding job representing all of us, Craven County, and the Department of Defense, meeting those needs up in Cary. And thank you for all of that. I'd also like to give props to Mayor Will Lewis for representing Havelock and Craven County so well. I'm not sure he does anything better than that when he's in front of a group of people talking about Department of Defense needs. Moving, looking forward, I am looking forward to the Board of Education budget presentation so that all bad rumors can be dispelled and we can start moving forward with our new school year. And that's all I have, Commissioner Booker.
Well, then I agree with that.
I just have one comment, and that is if you are.
You didn't have something to add? I'm sorry, then I know you want to, you want to be last. Just want to say, community members in District 6 remain highly engaged and continue to express concerns regarding ongoing and upcoming DOT construction projects. Fortunately, DOT official, we did have a town hall, which we discussed that. Cadmus Capehart was enough to come out and answer some of those questions. Fortunately, DOT officials have been responsive and willing to engage directly with the public, which has helped maintain transparency and open lines of communication. I'd like to remind residents to be aware of any perceived, any perceived community property is located within a DOT right of way. It may be subject to removal without compensation. This is an ongoing issue in my district, especially if an easement agreement is not in place and agreed upon by all parties. For example, Croatan Crossing is currently seeking documentation of such an agreement. Without it, they may be at risk of losing their entrance signage. Some of these documents can be old, hard to find, or may not exist at all. So if that's the case, then the burden of that cost goes to the taxpayers and residents of that neighborhood, unfortunately. My next town hall will be return as usual to our usual location. Carolina Pines, the last one was Liberty Church. Kind of going back and forth to each side of Havelock. And that's it.
It is, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Just a general comment. All, many of us, maybe all of us, have occasion to drive on Highway, US Highway 70 through James City. And if you have been paying attention, you'll notice that there have been more lane closures recently. And also, if you're paying attention, you will see that the landscape is starting to change. The tremendous amount of infrastructure that had to be put in place before, before the work of building the road could be done, is approaching the end. And I don't want you to quote me, but I think they had to put like 50 pipes under the road to take water from one side to the other. Some of them are six feet. A lot of work. And it's coming along, but I can tell you, we're all going to have to be patient in the months ahead because it's going to get more congested as they get to the point of literally starting in the not-too-distant future of building a new road and building elevations over the underpasses. So give yourself some extra time when you've got to go from one side of James City to the other. And I'm excited. When I ran for office the first term, my concern was the construction of the, the new highway through James City was going to be, going to be a problem. And now here we are, six years later, and we're right in the middle of it. So things like that take time. I'm excited about the reduced number. We were speaking the other day just for the public's information. Every time there's an accident on 70, the, in James City area, the Township 7 Fire Department responds to that accident. And just on 70 and the access roads on both sides of 70, in 2023, I've asked a lot of people, how many accidents do you think were on those, that roadway during that one-year period? And people will guess, oh, 50, 75, 100. And people will guess, oh, fifty, seventy-five, a hundred. It was actually like five hundred, including some fatalities. This new road is going to literally eliminate most of that. Every stoplight is going to be gone, we're going to have roundabouts, so we aren't going to have people T-boning into other people. Going to be wonderful, we just have to be patient for the next, how long, Jack? Two years? I would say three, just to be safe. Next couple of years are going to be, require your patience. So give yourself extra time, and you can also use Cherry Point Road. That's not a bad idea to kind of avoid a lot of that traffic. So with that, Commissioners, I will entertain a motion to recess to reconvene here on May the eighth at eight thirty a.m. to receive a presentation from Craven County Schools. Do I have a motion?
I moved.
Have a motion, got a second?
For May ninth.
I didn't say May ninth? Glad I said May ninth. If I didn't, I apologize. May ninth, twenty twenty-five at eight thirty a.m., right here. We will be hearing from the Craven County School Board, so.
So moved.
Got a motion?
I heard May ninth, but I may have misheard.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Sure. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. With that, we are recessed.